We're calling the regular board meeting of the Delmar College District Board of Regents to order at 12:00 PM on Tuesday, August 9th. I'm going to call roll to establish a quorum. Regent Everett.
Here.
Regent Bennett.
Here.
Regent Garza.
Here.
Regent Hutchison.
Here.
Regent Villarreal.
Here.
Regent Scott, we have a quorum and can conduct business. We have two regents who will be absent today and one who will be joining us via Teams in a few minutes, and so we'll announce his presence when he is joining via Teams. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to start with a moment of silence, and I would like to do this in honor of two of our former regents who we were notified in the past days had passed away. Mr. Ralph Diaz served as a regent of Delmar College for 11 years, including three years as chairman of the board. He started his tenure in the early 1990s and served through 2001 in different timeframes, but we want to acknowledge Ralph Diaz and his commitment to Delmar College. Also want to recognize former Regent Guy Watts, who served as a regent for 27 years on the board, ranging from 1988 through 2019, and he passed away recently as well. So, in honor of those two former regents, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Regent Bennett, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And please join me in reading the Delmar College vision statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from our official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute." Do we have anyone here for public comment today? We begin our meeting with public comment. Seeing none, we are going to change up the agenda a little bit today, and so for those in the audience and for those watching online, the board is going to go immediately into closed session, and then coming out of closed session, we will have any potential action items coming out of that, and we will actually move immediately into our regular agenda for Agenda Items 4 and 5. Dr. Eskamia is needing to depart early today to travel to Austin. He has Texas Community College Finance Commission duties this evening and all day tomorrow, and so we want to maximize the time with Dr. Eskamia with us today, and then are going to weigh in on the broad and wonderful shoulders of the rest of the staff to take his place when he has to depart approximately 2:00 PM today. So with that, the board is going to go into closed session under Texas Code 551.074 regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including annual evaluation of the college president and president's contract with possible discussion and action in open session, and Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and the seeking of legal advice from counsel with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 12:05 PM. President Dr. Eskamia, to reflect three provisions. Those provisions would be, one, to have the additional year of service added to his rolling contract.
Rolling contract?
Two.
Two.
To receive the same raise that all exempt staff at Delmar College would be receiving for the upcoming school year. And three, to buy back two years of service to be paid over three fiscal years, which would begin with this year, '21, '22, '23, and '23, '24, up to $135,000, and I would include with this motion to direct general counsel to prepare documents for signature to bring back to our board chairman. Motion by Dr. Villarreal, second by Regent Hutchison. I do need to note for the record that Dr. Nick Adami joined us at coming out of closed session, so he is on Teams and prepared to vote as well. Are there any questions or comments regarding the motion? Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, would all regents in favor of the motion as presented by Dr. Villarreal, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Eskamia, for your service. We appreciate all that you do and your leadership for not just the college, but for community colleges across the state and across the nation, and we are so grateful for your dedication to Delmar College, our students, our faculty, the entire Delmar College family. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regents, and to the entire college. I appreciate it, and it's an honor to serve. Thank you.
All right. We will continue with our regular agenda. I am going to actually ask Dr. Eskamia for his college president's report before we go into those action items. So, Dr. Eskamia, do you have your president's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, regents, and everyone listening in. My report begins with our Oso Creek campus activity. Although there's some construction that continues at Oso Creek Campus, a limited number of courses were offered there this summer, the second summer session, which began July 11th and concluded, or concludes, on the 18th in just a few short days from now. Enrollment for the fall classes at Oso... Well, that was an exciting day. I know it was low-key and it was kind of incremental process, but I got to witness the students kind of trickling in in a very restrictive capacity, but they were there, and teaching and learning has begun in earnest at the Oso Creek Campus. Enrollment for the fall classes at Oso Creek is well underway, and these are enrollments, okay? These are seats. These are not head count. I want to emphasize this, but we're counting enrollments. In other words, the number of unique classes that students are taking, and that's 1,567 as of August 5th. And what that means is, on average, our students take about two classes, and so if you just use that logic right now, it's about 700, and, well, you can divide it by two, and about 700-plus students are taking classes, getting ready to take classes this fall. That's a robust number, and we expect it to continue to increase with all kinds of registration events and marketing of all kinds. My kids are even telling me they're hearing about them on the radio and all kinds of things. They're seeing it on the social media and the like, and this includes two registration rallies, this Thursday, August 11th, and another one Thursday, August 18th, both from 4:00 to 7:30 in the STEM Building, which is our primary instructional building there. This is a combined effort by Student Affairs, IT, College Relations, and various academic departments. I want to thank everybody for what they've done in the current and what they're embarking upon. Also this month, we're offering tours of Oso Creek Campus. We continue to offer tours for our employees. There's lots of folks that haven't gone by. This effort was coordinated by College Relations Office. Thank you, Lorette and team. And the next two tour dates are August 12th and 26th. What they do is they send out announcements, and they say, "Hey, everybody show up with your walking shoes. We'll have refreshments to keep you hydrated, and let's have a good time looking at the new campus." As I've mentioned previously, we anticipate holding a grand opening of the campus on an appropriate day in as early as possible in spring. How's that for a disclaimer? So, we're going to... We're trying to... I got the thumbs up from our chief college relations officer, so that's where we want to be. We want it to happen ASAP, fast. We're anxious, but supply lines are slowing us down still. That being said, I'm going to move to summer commencement. Our summer 2022 commencement ceremony will be held, scheduled for 7:00 PM Friday, August 19, in the Salina Auditorium at the American Bank Center. The keynote speaker will be Mr. Richard Mory, and President of Christus Spahn Hospital Alice in Clayburg. He's a former graduate and has all kinds of great things to say as a health leader and particularly in this time. The other thing that we want to accentuate is that we will have our class... Pardon me. We'll have our first class of BSN students going through, and that is a big deal. There were 14 of them. I met every one of them this past week, I think it was Thursday, and they are excited. I saw them present their final capstone projects and the like, and so they too will be participating. It is a momentous, historic day that'll be coming on August 19th at our commencement for Delmar College. It'll be livestreamed on the college's website and social media channels. Getting the nod there, too. Fall convocation, I'll be hosting our fall convocation at 10:00 AM Monday, August 22, in the Richardson Performance Hall on the Heritage Campus. This convocation will be in-person only. Usually, there's enough seating for spacing and that kind of thing, should it require, or should someone be more comfortable that way. Fall 2022 classes begin Monday, August 27th. Excuse me. Excuse me. August 29th. I apologize. Nobody's going to come early anyway, but August 29th. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair and regents.
Thank you so much, Dr. Eskamia. Are there any questions for Dr. Eskamia? In the past couple of weeks, I've had conversations with folks about nursing shortages in the community, and that's an ongoing topic, and so I know that there's going to be a lot of excitement around our first graduates in our bachelor's program, and so I encourage us to toot that horn loud and wide because we need as many students as we can get into the nursing pipeline of any kind. We need to continue to try to do that. So, thank you for that, Dr. Eskamia. We are going to move to our action items, and we're going to start on our regular agenda with item number four, which is discussion and possible action related to the election order on the petition submitted by Robstown for Delmar College pursuant to Texas Education Code 130.065, calling for an election to annex the territory comprising of Robstown Independent School District. Ms. Lenora Keys and Mr. Augustine Rivera will be doing that presentation, and Augie's not in the room, so Lenora. Here comes Augie. Here he comes. We are, yeah, going to our regular agenda item. There we go. Sorry to confuse IT folks. We appreciate the flexibility today. We're moving around a little bit. Yes.
Okay. All right. So, regents, here we are. You are at the next step in this process that you've embarked on under 130.065 of the Texas Education Code. Some of this may seem familiar to you, but that's because not much has changed. Punch in the button. There we go. So, again, just to do a quick recap, back on April 26th, the college received a petition that requested an election on the question of annexing the territory comprising the Robstown Independent School District. After the signatures were verified by college staff, on May 10th, you accepted the petition and directed staff to prepare a proposed service plan for the district and to arrange for a public hearing pursuant to statute. On June 2nd, you approved the service plan and directed staff to publish the plan and to schedule a public hearing to take place within the territory that's being proposed for annexation. On June 29th, you held a public hearing at 6:00 PM at the Ortiz Intermediate School Cafeteria in Robstown, Texas, which is within the district, and you heard comments from the public as well as input. A webpage was established on delmar.edu where information was provided to the public regarding both the service plan as well as details about the annexation. Again, for everybody's identification, you can see that that's the area that we're looking at, the area to the left that says Robstown ISD, which runs continuously with District 3. That's the area that's looking to be annexed. The timeline, which you can see a little bit better, but you've been following right along the timeline. I won't go over it again because, as you'll remember, you worked backwards from the date of the election as to when you had to take action, when you had to publish a service plan, when you had to hold a public hearing, and you've been within all of those timelines, and now you're within the phase where you can actually order an election, and that's the action item that you have in front of you today. Again, just for the purpose of keeping the public in tune with this, you've got both a taxing district and a service area, and your service area is larger than your taxing district, and it is not always the case, in fact, it's frequently not the case, that your service area does not run the same as your taxing district. This, again, informs you. This is 130.177. You will see what currently comprises the service area of the Delmar College District. To expand your taxing district boundaries, you can do that by contract or by election. Contract's a little tough to get, but election is the most common method that's used, and that's what we're working off of today. Again, this confirms that you held the public hearing on June 29th at 6:00 PM at the Robstown Ortiz Intermediate School, and in addition to the board, Dr. Eskamia and most of the executive team and other staff were there to help support the board. The service plan... I'll let Ms. Keys go over it.
Thank you, Augie. The service plan identifies the existing tax rate and the impact on the community in a broader scope. Presently, our tax rate is assessed at point... The debt source tax rate is assessed at .078044, and the maintenance and operation tax rate is .205296 per $100 of assessed valuation. This gives a combined property tax rate of 0.283340, and this is all in pursuant to the tax code. Within the service plan, we also show the impact on the average homeowner. In Robstown Independent School District, presently, the taxable value is at an average of $59,038, and this would increase the average homeowner $167 annually, or $14 per month, and the same tax exemptions apply, and they are all listed specifically within the service plan. Our tuition and fees were set by the board last February, and presently is $107 per credit hour. In addition, the college charges a flat fee per term of $85 for a total of $192. This compares to the outer district rate of a total of $242. This slide shows the difference in what an average resident in Robstown Independent School District would pay as we compare in district to outer district. As you can see, at 12 credit hours, the average resident would be saving approximately Additional key points is the impact of being within the taxing district versus within our service area to the residents within Robstown Independent School District. They would be eligible to vote in the Delmar College Board of Regents elections. They would have access to all of our existing facilities, campuses, and centers at the in-district rate, and student support services could be expanded to be more locally delivered, and also any services that are... That are any of our students receive today are available. Additionally, customized training and more access to our Small Business Development Center and business support pieces are also available. And all, again, the big change here would be at the in-district rate of any of our student services. We would also have greater access to degrees and transfer programs. The idea is that they would be locally more convenient for students in a variety of ways, and examples would be our GED program, our English Second Language, and these types of programs with upskilling and reskilling focusing on preparing the workforce for tomorrow's Our next step. Mr. Rivera?
So, here you are. The next step is to order the election. From the election, from the Education Code, you can see that the Board of Regents shall issue an order for an election to be held in the territory proposed for annexation on a uniform election date that is not less than 45 days after the date of the order. If you were to order the election today, you would meet that time requirement, and the uniform election date that we're looking at is November 8th, 2022. The election shall be held only in the territory proposed for annexation, and only those registered voters residing in that territory are permitted to vote. Just to be very clear, y'all aren't voting on it, nobody in Oasis County, except for those within the Robstown Independent School District, will be deciding this particular ballot item. The ballot language reads as follows, and it's in the order as well, and this is prescribed by statute. The Education Code subsection G tells us that it shall basically be approving the annexation by the Delmar Board of Regents of the following territory, the territory comprising the Robstown Independent School District, and authorizing the imposition of an ad valorem tax for junior college purposes, which is currently set at a rate of 0.283340 cents per $100 of valuation, I mean, of valuation of taxable property. And that, again, is the way that it's worded in the statute, with the exception of the description of the territory, and we borrowed from the petition, which defined the territory as that territory comprising the Robstown Independent School District. It'll be for or against. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, not necessarily about the ballot language, because I understand that is the current tax rate today, and when the election will be held, by calling the order, we have to state that tax rate as it exists today. If our tax rate changes as a result of the new budget process, in actuality, when those new residents of the taxing district, should it pass, actually receive their tax bill, would it be at the lower tax rate, or whatever the current tax rate is at that time?
Whatever the current tax rate is at that time, is my understanding.
Okay. So, today, it's this.
Right.
But when they actually get their tax bill, it may be something different based on our budget and our tax rate at that time.
I believe that's correct, and we went around and around this. Because of the timing of when you're ordering the election and actually adopting the tax rate, and when it goes into effect, it's not in sync. But looking back, we determined that the real purpose of that additional language is to let the voters know that they're going to be taxed.
Yes.
That that's the real purpose of the truth and taxation part of this, but I would admit that it's a little clunky.
And conversely, because this is ballot language and that is the taxing rate today, if in future years, the tax rate obviously goes up or down, either way, then the residents would be paying whatever that overall tax rate is. I just wanted to be really clear about why it's in the ballot language this way versus in practice over the next years, what that would look like.
Right.
Okay.
Got it.
Any other... Well, one more slide and then questions from the board.
So, if the measure is adopted, then the board shall enter an order declaring the election result and annexing the new territory. The new territory shall be assigned to one or more of your current single-member districts. The annexation, the act or the effect of the annexation will not impact the term of any current board member, so every one of you will continue to hold office throughout the rest of the term that you currently hold. Any questions?
So, board members, if you have a question about the process, I'm going to ask you to... You can certainly ask those now, then we're going to have an opportunity for public comment, and then we will come back for a motion and any discussion on the motion itself. So, do you have any questions for Ms. Keys or Mr. Rivera about the presentation? Dr. Villarreal? I see no questions from the board. At this time, I would like to invite, if there's anyone who would like to make public comment, we don't... We have a couple of cards filled... No, we have no cards filled out. If you would like to make public comment, please come forward, introduce yourself, and give us your name and address, please, and we would like the opportunity for anyone to make comment on this presentation now. Yes, sir. Hello, sir.
My name is Ricardo Bosque, and I am from Robstown. I've been living there for 75 years. You mentioned the tax rate. Is it going to be going down, as I'm understanding, maybe? Is that what you're trying to maybe do here today or tomorrow, whatever?
We have a proposal that we will discuss during our budget workshop and call for that tax rate to be published. We're having that discussion today, and the final tax rate will be adopted on August 23rd, and that tax rate right now is proposed to go down according to the current budget.
I would assume that it would go up and down, however, the board, wherever the... Anyway, I am here for it. We want to... People with this kind of colored shirt that are sitting there are for it, and we want you all to vote for the annexation of Robstown into the district, because I think the way it's set up right now, a lot of the kids in school are benefiting from the program summit, or benefiting. But I've been in education for a while, a little bit, and there's a lot of people that are older or didn't have the opportunity to go to school as formerly as some other people that will benefit for the different kinds of programs that the college is available, and that's why I and other folks here want that to go through. And we will work hard to get the vote for the annexation of Robstown into your domain. And I do thank you, each and every one of you, for giving, of course, a very positive thought, and we look forward to working with you, each and every one of you, and I, in the past, have worked for different programs in Delmar in terms of coordinating with other programs, so I do appreciate you doing this for us from the bottom of our souls. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, staff has made the recommendation that we adopt the order calling for the election pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Texas Education Code 130.065 regarding the annexation of territory comprising for the Robstown Independent School District. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that an order has been provided to you ahead of time. It's been in your packet. It's been published, so the public has had an opportunity to review it as well. I would have just one slight correction that if one of you would like to move for the approval of the order, that it include that we call it a special election. I want to be clear, it's called an election, but just to be clear, it's a special election, so there are two places where we would amend the order, but otherwise, we would present the order to you for action as presented.
Thank you. So, with that amendment, is there a motion from the board to call for a special election for the annexation of the area comprising Robstown Independent School District? Ms. Everett makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Villarreal. Any discussion or questions on the motion and process? Ms. Everett?
Thank you. I would just like to say, to clarify mostly for the public, that our vote on this matter doesn't represent us specifically endorsing the annexation, but it is us allowing the residents of Robstown ISD to make that determination for themselves, and I am definitely in support of that.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Any other comments? I'll echo that. I think it is, given the petition, given the interest and the organization of folks who are asking for this to come forward, Delmar College has always... who are asking for this to come forward, Delmar College has always reached out to all areas covered by our service area to look at what we can do within the constraints, the financial constraints. And so I think this opportunity that has been presented to us and for the opportunity for us to respond to that petition, we are grateful for that and grateful for the individuals who have been involved in that effort. And we look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve the folks of Robstown Independent School District area, hopefully within our taxing district. All right. All those then in favor of the motion as presented and amended, again, the term calling special election, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Keys. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you for the Robstown for Delmar College folks. We appreciate your efforts. All right. We'll move on to item number five, which is the, yes, we're going to do that before.
Got you.
Yes. So we're going to do the election calling for, excuse me, number five, which is discussion and possible action related to our order calling our regent election and candidate information. Ms. Tammy McDonald?
Thank you, Chair. Delmar College will have the following three Board of Regents positions on the November 8th, 2022 ballot. District two regent, single-member district. District five regent, single-member district. And at-large regent, at-large district. Election packets were made available beginning 7:30 a.m. on July 25, 2022. Packets will continue to be available on the Delmar College website, under the Board of Regents webpage, and also at the Delmar College Heritage Campus, Haldenfeld Administration Building, Room 105A for potential candidates. The filing deadline for all potential Board of Regents candidates is 5 o'clock p.m. on August 22, 2022. The Texas Election Code requires that the Board of Regents adopt orders calling for the election. The college will participate with Nuasis County in the general election. Details of polling places, election judges, and early voting locations will be provided by Nuasis County at a later date. Your packet contains the order, excuse me, the order calling for the election for the regent positions that I just spoke about. And it also calls to, I wanted to point out that it also calls to name Ms. Jessica Alanese as our, appoint Jessica Alanese as our election manager or administrator. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. McDonald? Seeing none, Ms. Alanese, thank you for your continued service as our election administrator. We appreciate your thoroughness and attention to detail in all matters relating to our elections. Thank you. The order is in our packet today. Is there a motion to call for the order, to pass the order calling for the Delmar College Board of Regents' general election? Motion by Ms. Hutchinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garza. Any questions? Any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we will move back, IT, move back to our staff reports. And we are going to begin, we're going to have our staff budget update. And then we'll continue with the rest of the agenda as presented, but going back to now our budget update. Mr. Garcia could not be with us in person. And so Dr. Kathy West and Mr. John Johnson are going to provide in-person updates. And of course, Mr. Garcia is on our team's meeting and is available as needed. Dr. West?
Good afternoon, Regents and Madam Chair. We are here to review with you the updates that we have made to the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2023. And we have included most of the slides that were in your workshop packet. But we're only going to go over the slides that we updated to save a little time. We did add two new slides yesterday afternoon. If you noticed, Delia sent y'all out an amendment. And one of those slides, the last one, is a review of the property tax calculation. So John will have to skip down to that when he's talking about property tax revenues. So just wanted to say we will have a bit of a switch there. Today, John will talk about revenues, the updates to revenues. Tammy will talk about the revisions to salaries. And she's also going to go over the cash reserve goals and policy that's later in the packet. And then Jackie's going to talk about the updates we did to expenses. So now I will turn it over to John.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents. I will move on to the slide that is titled Revenue Changes and Assumptions. There are really two components when projecting the tuition revenue budget. First, is any change to the rate charge made during this per semester hour? The second is enrollment projections received for the upcoming year from the Enrollment Services Division. As included in our previous present budget presentation, the in-district tuition rate, excuse me, while I put on my glasses, that's probably why I can't read. Excuse me. As included in our previous budget presentation, the in-district tuition rate was increased by $2 per semester hour. Enrollment, since we did not cover enrollment numbers and its effects on revenues, we decided to add this information to the presentation. Enrollment Services estimates that enrollment would decrease by 8% when compared to 2019 pre-COVID enrollment numbers. The Budget Office projects this loss to enrollment to have a $1.85 million effect to the budget. This is slightly offset by the increase in the tuition rate. Property taxes. Since our last presentation, the college received the final taxable value, values, numbers from the county. Based upon the numbers, we are proposing a .017236 decrease to the overall tax rate. And the factors we used in coming up with this were the limitation of the 8% increase over the no-new revenue rate by statute, the 11.6% valuation growth, and the $537 million in new construction. If there are no questions on that, I'll go to the next slide. I would just stay on this slide momentarily. And the reason we are doing this is because many questions came up because since there is a limitation on the tax rate of 8%, people were wondering how we could raise property taxes by, the revenue on property taxes by nine. So now, the new slide we added, which is further down in the area, will try to explain this in the most simple way possible. Here we go. This slide attempts to explain how our budget, budgeted tax revenues could increase by 9% when there is a cap of 8% over the no-new revenue rate by statute. As noted in the first bullet, the no-new revenue rate is a property tax rate calculated to produce the same amount of tax revenue this year if applied to the property values that were included last year. So for instance, if you happen to have a property that is worth $100,000 this past year, and our tax rate was 10 cents, the college would collect $200 this year. If we wanted to collect the same $200 next year and their value went up to 200,000, now their tax rate would only be 10 cents and not 20 cents, if that makes sense. So we're getting the same $200 in both years. So that's what the no-new revenue rate tries to explain. So looking at the slide, you can see that the no-new revenue rate is .182388. By taking this and adding the 8% allowed by statute, you come to the maximum amount allowed without holding an election to seek voter approval. This is also referred to as the voter approve rate, as you can see, is .196979. The, by proposing the budgeted tax rate of .196879 highlighted in blue, the college was able to stay just below the 8% maximum. So that, so where does the 9% come from? The college was able to increase its revenues by 9% because the no-new, the new construction of $537 million is not included when calculating the no-new revenue rate, because it was not included in last year's valuations. So that accounts for any increase that we can get over that 8% rule, if that makes Now, there are many other adjustments that go to this calculation. If any of you have our budget book, you will find that it's five pages long with probably 40 different adjustments. So this is the most simplest way of explaining it. But really, the no-new construction is the biggest area that increases that availability of extra dollars. Are there any questions on that explanation? I can't, I can't believe it. So I'll go back and try to get these slides in the correct order. Okay. So on this slide, the changes that we made, on this slide, there's a small increase to property taxes over the last one we presented of $231,000 when compared to the prior presentation, because we received a last-minute update from the county on the no-new revenue rate. In addition, there was a small increase in miscellaneous revenue of $138,000 for additional projected income from investment earnings. Any questions? Okay, here. Since there was an adjustment to the proposed tax rate due to the change in the no-new revenue rate, some of the, some changes were made to the tax rate previously shown. This slide compares rates over a five-year period. The debt service rate is highlighted in light blue and the MNO in dark blue. The last column to the right are rates being proposed for the current year. The total tax rate at the top right is actually 1 and 7.7236 tenths of a penny, less than the previous year, with 8.881 tenths coming from debt service and 0.8426 tenths of a penny coming from local main. The annual note, the annual tax to homeowners based on the average taxable value for that specific year is shown at the bottom. Based on the 22 average taxable homestead value of $200,675 for the current year, a homeowner would pay, would be paying $534 for the current year or an $18 increase over the previous year. Are there any questions on that? This is too easy. If there are no, actually, if there are no questions, Ms. McDonald will present the proposed salary benefit increases.
Thank you, John. So we're going to skip through the next few slides because they have no changes since they were last presented, and we'll move on to the proposed salary benefit changes. So in the July Board Workshop, administration provided a salary increase scenario with the associated budget investment. Today, administration is proposing the following revised recommendation. Faculty to receive the year of experience pay at the current rate of $829. And the other three components, which are base, education, and rank, receive a 3% increase to the respective rate schedules. That's a change from the previously proposed 2%. So now we're proposing three. So for example, a nine-month faculty base that's currently at $52,000 would increase to $53,560. And then the slide shows you or gives you the information as we had before as to the amount of salary and then the amount of benefits associated with that salary increase for faculty. On the exempt employees, previously proposed was 2%. We are now proposing a 3% increase. And that budget impact is about $452,000, $60,000 in benefits for a total of 512 approximately. And then on the non-exempt employees, previously proposed was 3%. We are now proposing a 4% increase. As we had mentioned in the workshop, we're providing extra consideration to our hourly employees. It was a unified message from the College Wide Compensation Committee. And that budget investment would be almost $354,000 for salary and then benefits 47, for a total of $400,000. So this total budget investment for salary increases for all categories is a little bit over $2 million. Any questions? Okay. This, there we go.
There we go. Okay. Are you going to cover the board policy? The board policy was part of the package.
Board policy for?
B4-1.1.
That'll be later on, sir. Right now, I'm doing the proposed salary increases. And the B4 is the reserve funds. Yeah, that's adjusted a little bit.
Okay. I'm tying the two together. That's why I'm asking. I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on this slide, it was as we had presented. So what we have changed is the column, because it does provide you with the salary increase column. So we had gone over the different employee types in the workshop, new positions, position adjustments, part-time salary, the raises, which now reflects what I just went over, and then our vacancy factor. So the overall budget investment for compensation for employees with all of these things taken into consideration is a little over $1.7 million. And if you have any questions about the columns, I'd be glad to go over that with you again. The detailed information is what was presented at the workshop, but I'd be glad to go over that again if you have any questions about it. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Jackie. She's going to go over the expense revisions, and then we will get to the section, Mr. Ben, that you asked about.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Good afternoon. So for our proposed non-salary expense budget for fiscal year 2023, we are now estimating about a $2 million increase. The only two categories on this slide that has changed is campus police and the election expense. So we, on the campus police, we did end up taking some one-time expenses and moving those to the plant fund. And then we did increase the election expense to cover the cost for the Robstown election. So for our expense budget for fiscal year 2023, the total salary and benefit changes are those changes that Ms. McDonald just discussed. So our total change is 1.7 million. For our non-salary expenses, we have the $2 million that we just discussed. We are anticipating our contingency to go up to $56,000 increase, and that's to meet that 1.5% for the board policy. So for our total increase that we're proposing right now, it's 3.7 million, which is still a 3% change from fiscal year 2022. Are there any questions? Okay, so the next two slides is just that further breakdown of our expense categories. The salary and benefits is the same as what Ms. McDonald just discussed. So on those, the non-salary expenses, we do have some categories that did change. And a lot of that is just shifting from one category to another to help cover that 1% increase on those salary expenses. And then for the election expense, you do see that increase of $30,000 for the Robstown election, and then the larger decrease in the and then the larger decrease in the campus police for those one-time expenses that we're going to cover out of the plant fund. So for our total proposed but, expense budget for fiscal year 2023, we are looking at an increase of $3,781,909, which is a 3% increase or 3% change from fiscal year 2022. Are there any questions on these slides? Okay. And Ms. McDonald will talk about our cash reserve goals.
Thank you, Jackie. Cash reserve goals for the college are to enhance the college's financial agility in support of the college's mission throughout the crises, to support the long-range strategy of steady and modest tuition increases and to maintain a good credit status as measured by AA bond rate. Using the cash reserve goals as we just went over as a foundation and to strengthen the financial position of the college, in August of 2020, administration brought to the Board of Regents for approval revisions to the financial reserve policy that included creating a new risk reserve fund. The Board of Regents approved the revisions and this slide shows the current financial reserves board policy. So I'm not going to read the whole policy for you, but this is the one that we, that the board did accept the revisions, the new risk reserve fund. And so this is our current policy. Any questions?
I do have questions. The first component, A, when was that adopted, that part of the policy? The 1.5% contingency?
I know we have that. I don't have the history with me, but I know that that has, well, Dr. Simeon answered it.
I don't have the exact date either. It's been with us.
It's been more than 10 years since I've been here.
It was a long time ago.
It's been a long time. It's, I don't want to, I don't know, it's more than 15 years or 20, but it's been with us definitely before my time here or right about when I got here. I don't recall.
So whomever that board was at the time, years ago, that adopted this policy has restricted our budget to a line item that says 1.5% is a contingency. Now, I have never seen, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we've ever used that contingency fund in the current year that we reserve it.
I believe prior to your time, there was, there was a time where the state was doing a clawback of 24% of appropriations where that, what those dollars were likely clawed back and used or just absorbed through the budget.
But that was a long time ago.
It was, it was at least seven, eight, nine years ago. And I think it goes back to 2013, 14, somewhere around there. So it's been, it's been a long time. Yes, sir.
So my concern is we're restricted. We, we can't do a thing or your, your finance department can't do a thing about that 1.5%. So we have an allocation in the line item budget that says 1.5% is reserved and it's not used in the current year, almost never been used. And I, I know that it hasn't been used since 2014 because I reviewed those financial statements.
Yes, sir.
So my concern is that board probably had a good intent in doing that. But now we're restricting our faculty and our employees to a much lower than, than inflation rate raise because we're limited by the expenses that we can, we can approve because of the 8% increase. We're limited, but yet we've got $1.7 million there that we're not going to use. We're just going to reserve and that's going to be cash that we collect from the taxpayers and put into a fund that is not going to be addressed this year. We're not going to write any checks on that fund this year. So my hope is that we could change B four, 1 dot 1A. It says a contingency fund equal to 1.5%. I would like to change that and I know it would require a motion. I'd like to change that equal to 1.5% to up to 1.5% so that we, the board, have, have the ability to redirect some of those funds to raises to our personnel that now we're, we're expecting to, to live on 3% or 4% raise when inflation's over 8%. That doesn't happen often, but it's happening this year.
Mr. Garcia has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Good afternoon, Madam Board and members of, of the board, Madam Chair and members of the board, Mr. President. I want to respond to, to the comments that Mr. Bennett just, just referred to. Yes, there is a restriction on the 1.5 million, but if I read, uh, uh, column A, the last sentence has very specific language that allows the college to redirect those dollars and it must be approved by the board. So it's by board action item that allows us to. The other piece is, you know, one of the things that I considered when making a decision in transitioning into this organization is whether or not this organization had the financial agility for long-term sustainability of the organization. And I would have to say that when I looked at your fund balance, that those numbers were tucked in and it said that you guys were preparing or adding financial agility for leaner times in the near future. That's what the 1.5% does. It, it, it stabilizes any issues or any crisis that may be forthcoming. Because the other thing that I was taking into consideration is hurricane. As you recall, I joined, or came on board when the hurricane occurred back in 2017, 2018 and, and I'm thinking, what happens if one of those educational buildings gets flattened up? How will the college continue to operations? And even so, what if a building goes down and I'm not able to deliver any educational programs? But at the same time, I want to be able to keep our employees on our payroll because they're in a crisis as well. So fund balance, cash balances are all important when managing any crisis. So if we start talking about, hey, let's eliminate the 1.5 or let's adjust for it. I'm not too sure if adjusting it downward would make sense to me. If anything, an upward adjustment would make sense to me for this other reason. We just experienced a 9% inflation. If you, if you translate that to what's in your savings account, that means I can purchase 9% less of a cheeseburger at McDonald's than I did before the pricing. Same thing happens with any organization. You're, you're losing purchasing power. So the minute you start tapping into those reserves, you already lose the money. And then the question then becomes, how do you reserve dollars for the next crisis? And so yes, Mr. Bennett, you have a good point that we need to, uh, there's a need for it today, but there's language in the board policy that says we can do something with a board action item. At least that's how I read. 1.5% seems a little bit low for me when you hear the Federal Reserve talk about a, a price stabilization in of 2% on the average on the long run of the curve. We're at 1.5. We're below that inflationary rate that the Fed feels that is a comfortable level for them to run the economy. So those are my two cents.
Mr. Garcia, when we had that hurricane in 2017, we didn't write a check on that contingency fund that year, did we?
Knock on wood. The hurricane isn't not over yet.
Well, again, this is an unusual year. I don't like to see our salary increases limited to less than half the inflation rate. I'd like to do something about that. I'm comfortable with 6%. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. We can extract that additional money that's needed for the raises that I think they need from this contingency fund by board action.
The way I read the, um, the budgeted contingency reserve will be restricted and any transfer from such line must be approved by board action. So exactly what Mr. Garcia said, there, there could be board action to transfer funds out of that if the board so chose. Comments, questions, either on Mr. Bennett's discussion item or other, other questions? Yes, absolutely, Dr. Simeon.
Yeah, no, really quickly, I do appreciate the, the thoughts, Mr. Bennett, and I'm thinking. And, and it has come up, as you might imagine, in various budget meetings, you know, in, in ways to better support the employees and, and the spirit with which you have brought this information forth is, uh, is, uh, given us things to think about. It, it is a consideration for the board. It is the board's, it is squarely in a B, board-level policy for, for deeper discussion. We're, we're open for, for comments and, and guidance on how to proceed. That being said, as Chair Scott just said, there are stipulations that can be, the adjustments that can be made. It is, again, the board's call and purview. But I just want you to know how much we appreciate the, the calculations and the, and the synthesis of the, of your thoughts. Appreciate that.
A point of process clarification. If the board does want to entertain, like revising this policy and changing the language, then it would have to come back to another meeting because we did not post it as a policy change.
Yes, that's correct. If we wanted to change the policy, we'd have to do that. If we wanted to direct staff to do something different, we could potentially do that today because there is an op, is there an opportunity within the budget discussion to direct staff to do something different out of that reserve line?
And then Madam Chair, if I may add.
Not an action item.
It's a staff report.
I'm not right, correct, not right now during a staff report, but during the action item. Yeah. Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, if I may add to, you know, today we also have an action item to publish our, our budget. And so if we are going to, uh, uh, explore the possibility of further changes to the budget, then the question becomes whether or not, because we already calendarize the budget process and we're at the final stages of the plan. And so if there's any further changes to the budget plan, then in order to, to continue to comply with or, or stay on, on point with the calendaring of the process, it would probably mean that a, a special board meeting would need to make sure that we can continue to move forward for the budget update again with those, with the proposed changes discussed today. Sure that we can move forward with the public hearing that's scheduled for, uh, uh, for the 23rd, I believe, and there's a, a, an action item for that today and this afternoon's meeting or later on in this meeting. So thanks for, for considerations.
Mr. Garza had a question?
I, I did, but I'm also thinking about some of the things that, that Mr. Bennett mentioned and trying to do something for the employees. I had a question about, we're budgeting based on, uh, an 8% decrease in enrollment is what we're actually projecting. And sometimes I, I like to, uh, plan and, and expect the worst, but I also, I'm always hopeful for the best. So what would be the, the way that, or the vehicle that we might be able to consider if we saw an uptick in our enrollment over what we are budgeting for and what we're, what we're, what we're projecting? What would be the vehicle by which we might be able to do, say, for instance, some one-time or quarterly bonuses or something to the employees to be able to help with this inflation environment?
I have worked under a president that did that. It is, um, it, it was over, it was a while back. There is an opportunity that if enrollment meets budget and/or exceeds and allows for that, that a one-time mid-year adjustment can be made. There's, there's, there's other variations. I've seen other colleges do that sort of thing. We've, we've discussed that. We've talked about that as an option as well. It, it's just hinged on an enrollment that is, again, the most unpredictable that we've ever seen. And so that's the difficulty with, with bringing that forward to you all for consideration. It is, uh, tenuous at best. One point a couple of weeks ago, when we were, Oso Creek Campus was up 6% and then we did a drop and we're back to flat and then we went below. And so it's just, it's, it's, everything is just so difficult. That's the only reason why we haven't brought that forward.
Well, the only question I have is just that how cumbersome is it if we basically saw that kind of an environment after the enrollment period came up? And then the other side of it is typically if we don't do anything or did not think about doing something even mid-year for employees, when you have uptick in revenue because of increased enrollment or something to that nature, does that additional revenue just flow into fund balances? Does it flow into reserve? I'm, I'm not real familiar with how.
Yes, typically, when those, when those circumstances hit and they have before, it's been a while. But yeah, they, they flow in, flow over into the carryover. Of course, when you got influx of, of enrollment, you've got influx of overhead because more teachers, more that. That being said, depending if it's a base year or not, that, that those dollars, if there's any, um, uh, carryover dollars, they, they fall into the reserve formulas and plant funds and the like.
Is there anything to keep us from being able to, I want to say, draw some of that, some, some of those balances out for the specific issues that we just talked about?
I, I believe some of those dollars, past dollars, once they're, John, you're going to have to help me on this one. Tammy, if you can, I believe the history is that, the, the authority is that once they're, once they're put into the fund balances and those kinds of things, that they cannot be used for, um, for employee uses. They would have to be used prior to the closing of the, um, the closing of the year. That's why we'd hit it at the mid-year versus at the end of the academic year. That's my understanding. Tammy, Lenora?
There, there's a slide coming up shortly that John's going to go over that shows what's already dedicated within the reserve funds or allocated within the different reserve funds. And then we've also done a projection to see if we did give an overall inflationary incentive. And it approximately, just to give you an round figure, $1,000 per person that's full-time and $500 per part-timer is right over $1 million. So it gives you an idea, but you're going to see more detail in a minute about what's allocated already or dedicated within the different reserve funds with all three funds.
But I would, I would like, I think it's important to understand out of, again, and these are all board-adopted policies. So if we're going to change a board-adopted policy, we have to go through a little bit of a process to change a board-adopted policy. At least, at least it, we would have to post it for that discussion. But I'd like some clarification from Mr. Rivera, maybe not today, but soon, on the transferability of funds out of the contingency fund. Is it, our board policy here doesn't show any restrictions on when or what that could be used for. It just has to be approved by the board. And so that, to me, that's kind of maximum flexibility for the board out of that one fund. The other two have more restrictions to them, but that one fund is at the discretion of the board.
And, and could happen after we approve the budget?
Yes.
Right.
Could happen at any time. Yeah.
So Mike, and I think Lenora, or Ms. Keys, I think you started to answer this question and so maybe I'm getting ahead of our slides. But I'm wanting to know if, if staff did run some scenarios as far as if we did 4% and 5% or 5% and 6%, how much that would be out of specifically the contingency reserve fund?
Yes, Tammy has the numbers for that.
From, from moving from what we had before, which was the 2, 2 and 3 to the 3, 3 and 4 was a little over half a million dollars. So to put that in proportion, so if you want to go up one more, it would be definitely over half a million dollars for that percent. But of course, that ties us into the long-term commitment and long-term financial liability versus a one-time payment, which is short-term, we can do it now. But yes, so it's, it's going to be a little over half a million dollars to go up one more percent as it was proposed.
And remind me, how much is in the contingency reserve fund?
Thirty-four, as of today, 34 million. And our target is right about 29 million. To be at that 20% to 25%, our target would be 29 to 30 million.
And the 1.5% adds about 1.7 million this year.
Have we ever, and Madam Chair, you may know this. I know that in some private sector areas, so that you don't have the long-term commitment, you do, you know, a one-time payment is sometimes an option, right? A percentage of salary. Is that something that's also a possibility in the public and educational?
Yes. Under, there's two different ways. Under the general fund, if there is excess dollars, those dollars could always be relocated anytime during the year under the president's authority or approval of the board. And then the reserve, the funds, though, however, come under policy and most likely have to come back to the, to the board. But, but that would be within your power.
I'm sorry. Yes, Roll. Yes, sir.
Yes, if I may add, you know, here, here's a situation where, you know, it's a, it's a very tight budget, and we're trying to figure out how to fund any incremental amount for salary. And what we're really talking about is tapping into the reserves. And so what starts to happen is if it's a fixed cost and it's already a tight budget, what happens next year is the question. Do we continue to tap into the reserves until the financial condition is on the upward trajectory to sustain those fixed costs? Or do you continue to tap into your reserves in the meantime until, you know, it gets better? And then does your financial agility diminish when you start to do that? And when we came up with this policy of 25%, that was many, many, many years ago. We now have a total, I think, our risk environment has changed since then. The question then becomes, is that, is that still a reasonable amount? Or does there need to be a risk assessment to make a determination whether or not we need to maintain or add to it? So I'm just throwing out there from a long-term perspective, other things to be considered. I know we're trying to get to the short-term period, but, but it'll also take into consideration the long-term view of the financial health of the college.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Ms. Avery. Mr. Garcia, I don't, I don't disagree with you. And in fact, I'm, I'm supportive of the policy as it reads now. And I'm very grateful that our predecessors put that in place and that we have been able to build that contingency fund to where it is. I think that's, I think it puts us in a great position. And that's also why, though, I'm reluctant to, in fact, have raises beyond what y'all have presented today, that staff has presented today. But I am willing to explore the possibility of doing some sort of one-time payment to our faculty and staff out of the contingency fund. That's just my personal feeling, understanding that it's not on the agenda today for that kind of action. But I, I personally would like staff to explore that and what that might look like and what the costs and any pros and cons. You know, there may be some negative consequences that I'm not understanding.
Yes, I would like to also just piggyback on that. And thank you. I think you articulated it perfectly. I feel the same way. I understand also the importance of looking long-term and how it's going to impact down the way. I'm, and being conservative and making sure, you know, we're gonna be fine financially. But if we could utilize some of these funds for, whether you call it a retention pay or for coming back, for staying, I think that the more opportunities that we have for our staff where we acknowledge that, the quality is also, people want to come work for Delmar because staff is taken care of and they feel, they feel like they're appreciated. I'd like to see that as well. But I'd also like to see the ramifications coming from the staff to come back and tell us, we think we can do this, and, and still feel comfortable with where we're at. Just a thought.
Thank you, Regent, Regent Hutchinson.
Yes, and I'd want to maybe add to your burden, but also look at the implications of doing that just because of inflation and other pressures on, on staff. And the other sort of weaves in, what if, what if we've missed on our tuition, not tuition, enrollment and the enrollment numbers or some other factor. It could be an expense, but something else, we sort of find some money somewhere. Would that be a possibility? So sort of a conditional and then an unconditional one-time event.
Thank y'all very much. And we'll, I'm sure the staff under Mr. Garcia will be reviewing all of this and your input in consideration. So thank you very much.
So if I could.
Thank you for your thoughts. Yeah.
If I could synopsize kind of where we are, I think based on the workshop discussion, that when we get to the action item and where we are in our budget calendar, we would be comfortable, potentially comfortable moving forward where we are. But with some direction from the board today to look at a possible one-time or a, whether it's a longevity service bonus inflationary consideration, however we want to categorize it, but look at a potential one-time expenditure of funds within the next fiscal year out of reserve or potentially general fund allocate, reallocation.
Thank you very much.
Everybody, from a workshop standpoint, are there any other questions or considerations or things that we might want to discuss during this workshop? All right. Thank you all, staff, very much. I think this was great work between the last meeting and this one. Mr. Garcia, we miss you, but your staff did a very admirable job of carrying on in your stead.
There is just one last slide. I didn't know if you wanted John to go over that or not.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Whoever was supposed to.
I think, no, we, well, we, we saw the restricted fund reserves. So I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
All right. We thank you for those additional two slides. Those were helpful as well. Thank you. Anything else on the budget workshop? All right. Moving on to our pending business item, we will hear our quarterly financial and investment updates today. In September, we'll have the restart of our strategic planning workshops. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. We look forward to those always. And we'll also hear our internal audit report to the board. We've got a HRF update for either September or October, and then a number of reports that come to the board in October. And you'll see, moving on, our November and December. Calling to your attention once again, our attempt to not have a January board meeting. That is always our plan so that staff has an opportunity to enjoy their holiday break and not have to come straight back into a board meeting, just given the timing of things. So as of now, we would not be having a January board meeting. All right. We're gonna move into our consent agenda items. We have approval of minutes from various meetings over the past month. We have acceptance of investments for June and July and acceptance of financials for June 22. Does any item need to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions on the consent agenda items? Any public comment on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number six, which is our discussion and possible action related to the order to conduct a public hearing on our college budget. And let's see, Mr. Johnson's going to cover that.
Okay. The college is mandated by Texas Tax Code 26 to hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. Today's board action items is to hold a public hearing on August 23 at noon on the proposed budget and proposed tax rate. Details of these tax and budget information was presented in today's proposed budget update. Following the board's approval of this action, the college will make the August 23 hearing public in this weekend's caller times.
So we'll have two separate motions, one on a public hearing for the budget, and the second one will be their next action item on the tax rate. Is there any questions on the calling for the public hearing on the budget?
Madam Chair, let me clarify with Mr. Johnson. There also has to be a specific language.
Right.
In connection with the tax rate hearing, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. There has to be a motion made to approve the tax rate, and I've got that.
You've got, yeah, that's, yep, I've got it.
Okay.
So that's on the, that's on the next agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. So we can have a general motion to call for an order to conduct the public hearing on the 2022-23 college budget as presented. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Dr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Garza. Any questions or comments from the board? Any public comment on that item? Does this one need to be a roll call vote or a show of hands? Okay.
Roll call.
We would prefer a roll call vote. All right. Our roll call vote, then. Ms. Pettis, would you do a roll call vote for us, please?
Dr. Adame? Dr. Adame?
Yes.
Ms. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Villarreal?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Next item would be the discussion and possible action related to the order to conduct a public hearing on our 2022-23 tax rate.
The college is mandated by Texas Tax Code, Tax Code 26 to hold a public hearing on the proposed 2023 tax rate. Today's board action item is to hold a public hearing on August 23 at noon on the proposed budget and proposed tax rate. Details of the tax and budget information was presented in today's proposed budget update. Following the board's approval of this action, the college will make the August 23 hearing in this weekend's caller times. Newspaper.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson or Mr. Rivera on this? I'm gonna call on Ms. Hutchinson to read the language for the tax rate hearing proposal as, as directed.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .266104, which is effectively a 5.79% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms., Dr. Villarreal. Any discussion on the motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Again, we'll do a roll call vote on this one. Ms. Pettis?
Dr. Villarreal?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson? Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Avery? Dr. Adame?
Yes.
Thank you. All that motion also passes unanimously.
Just to clarify, the motion was for the tax rate specifically and also for the, the hearing that you're gonna hold.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think she read it exactly as you wrote it. All right. Thank you very much. Do you have something else, Mr. Johnson?
Just introducing the next guest for the investment.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight is our quarterly investment report. Mr. Johnson?
Today, we have Mr. David McHale Wayne from Meter, who will discuss the college's investment yield, investment performance, and strategies in pursuit of higher yields in light of the continued changes in our economy, fiscal, and monetary policy. Following the presentation, there is an action item for the board to consider.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Well, good afternoon, and thank y'all for having me. I think, hopefully, we'll make sure we're all on the, on the same page. Last time, we had a little mix-up. Mr. Garcia, how you doing? Let's see here. Just tab down? Okay. Well, as we've all been discussing here, you guys are under the same roof as everybody else in our collective universe. We're all talking about inflation. And obviously, we know the Federal Reserve is playing this, you know, delicate role of trying to stave off, you know, the rising inflation rates by raising short-term funding rates. And, you know, a year ago at this time, we were at record-low interest rates. I mean, we had, a six-month Treasury was a .02%. That six-month Treasury yield today is about a 310 as we speak. The one-year Treasury is about a 327. A two-year Treasury is a 328, almost flat. And then the yield curve right now is going back down again. What that's telling us, what the bond market's telling us, if history repeats itself, is the Fed is probably getting close to the end of this rate hiking cycle. But we just did have another 75 basis point increase in July after them raising 75 basis points in June. So everybody's portfolios are lagging, obviously, because whatever you bought a year ago, even three months ago, for example, you were buying a one-year callable agency at a 130, and that's being offered today at a 350. So the, the markets have reared, you know, the volatility factors through the roof. We're seeing 20-year high in yields after seeing record-low yields a year ago. So right now, I'm just gonna tab down to the, to the next slide. I mean, we've got a bunch of interesting developments. We obviously have Russia's over there invading the Ukraine, which is adding insult to injury. So everybody's gotta pay through the, you know, the price of gasoline, in addition to all the other goods and materials that are, you know, the, the cost of construction is through the roof, labor costs are rising. The one silver lining is, you know, the unemployment rate's not falling off the edge of the cliff. But it seems that recession is possible. It is part of every normal business cycle. We go from recession to growth. And right now, we're definitely coming into a period where things are gonna slow down a little bit. I think we're gonna be a little more immune to it here in our region, fortunately. But it's, again, one of those things that's at the, at the forefront of everyone's load. How, how much are we gonna slow down? And are the Fed's efforts going to, you know, be enough, right? So we wanna try to get through this hyperinflationary period and get things to cool back down. I think one of the strangest things we've seen in the past week was, you know, North Korea volunteering to send troops over to the Russia-Ukraine region. And I just think that's super ironic. We talk about, you know, interesting things going around, you know, not just, you know, in our, in our collective territory, in our US-based economy. But over there, that, that seems to be a very strange development. The expectations right now, obviously, I think short-term, there's a potential for rates to possibly go higher. But again, I'm pointing out that inversion we're seeing in the yield curve to say that the bond market is usually a, quite a good predictor. It was shoot, the yields were going up before the Fed ever took action and actually raised rates. Markets were selling off in anticipation of what they were going to do. And now we're seeing kind of the inverse of that starting to taper down. So that two-year yield, like I mentioned, is about a 328. A three-year yield right now is about a 320. And then it drops down to about a, right about a, just barely above three for, for a five-year. And a 10-year yield's at a 280. So we're talking 45 to 50 basis points difference between a two-year and a 10-year. Now, as it relates to Delmar's portfolio, we continue to see the weighted average maturity of the portfolio. We're trying to stay a little more overweight towards cash as the construction funds are being spent more aggressively now. The weighted average yield is obviously below Treasury yields because, again, you know, the, the tell can't catch up to the, to the head here. But as you can see on the bar charts down below, we've got over 54% of all the cash is one-year or less, and, and almost 30% of that being super liquid in the investment pools. The investment pool's silver lining is that rate's coming up aggressively one year ago. One year ago, that investment pool rate was averaging a .036, and right now, it's creeping up into the, right around 2%. So cash is kind of king right now, and the other opportunities that we are seeking to aggressively go after is short-term investments. Commercial paper yields are at record-high spreads, but we're not overweight anything. We're staying within our categories. And again, in the chart up above, you can see that right now, about a third of the portfolio is remaining construction funds. And it'll break that down a little bit better for us right here. As you can see, the local maintenance is, it's 43%, and between the plant and the INS and the revenue INS, the remaining balance, again, is construction funds. It looks like about 36% is remaining construction funds. Again, we just ended this Q3 here. You can see the book value is down about $6 million from the previous quarter. I think, again, that's your pooled funds. It's still a kind of a function of a little bit more going out the door than coming in. We're kind of coming into the low watermark that we historically see before tax collections come in later this year. So the WHAM, as I continue to state, we're staying shorter. You can see the WHAM has decreased by 21 days quarter-over-quarter. The yield has increased a little bit as a function of the reinvestment rates that we're getting coming out of the lower-yielding investments. And again, our cash rates are going up right now, following every Treasury move we get with the Fed raising on the short end of the curve. You can see, obviously, the interest earnings are benefiting. And then when we plot the charts out quarter-over-quarter, again, we can see that our agency yields really haven't budged that much, because we haven't added any, we've added just a modicum of agency, not maybe one short-term agency, but that yield's tapering down just a smidge because we're not committing a whole lot to that category. Commercial paper, on the other hand, is really where we have done most of our reinvesting. You'll see that category has gone from a .39 up to a .63. That's just solely a function of coming out of stuff that was maybe yielding a .2% and going back in, you know, three months ago. That rate was about 100 basis points lower. Today, we can get rates in the 3% range from four to nine months. But again, we're kind of staying cash-centric a little bit as we monitor the spending going on with all the various projects. Again, you can see as you go down that, municipal securities have bumped up a little bit. We've done just a few short-term munis. And then, obviously, the biggest change you're seeing right there is that local government investment pools. That rate's going to continue to creep up with every Fed rate increase. It's playing catch-up, so. This particular slide is just looking only at the 2018A, what remains in those account balances. It's probably even lower today as we speak, obviously. But the decline in book value and market value is just a function of cash being spent out of that. The WHAM is really just staying somewhat constant, but we're just simply reinvesting nothing out of those funds. The yield, as you can see, is coming down, but that's just a function of, again, almost as soon as the maturities are happening, the cash is getting spent out. The 2020 AMB construction funds, again, similar picture. You can see how that's changed, almost to the tune of over $10 million, almost $11 million. Again, that's just construction spending. The WHAM has similar characteristics, but almost everything that's coming in is just going right back out the door. This is just combining those two pie charts together, and it's breaking down the portfolio composition, what it looks like. Right now, it's 14% in cash. In all those categories remaining, municipal bonds being just under 20% and agencies, none of those right now, based on our conversations, all those things that are maturing are coming off the schedule, are going to remain in cash, and they're pretty much encumbered and going out as quickly as possible. And that's really it. If there was anything you wanted to talk about more granular in nature, I'm happy to address it, or just questions in general, investment-related.
Any questions? Thank you for being here today. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
It's been a great partnership over the years, and tell Linda we said hi.
I sure will. I sure will. Well, thanks again for having me.
Thank you. We do need to accept the college's quarterly investment report. Is there a motion to accept the report as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Avery. Any questions or comments on that item? Any public comment on that item? If not, all those in favor of accepting the college's quarterly investment report as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, item number nine.
Okay, we won't be letting Mr. McHale Wayne leave quite yet. In accordance with Public Funds Investment 2256 and Board Policy 24625, the college is to have a written investment policy regarding the investments of its funds that include investment strategies, investment objectives, preservation and safety of principal, liquidity, diversification, and yield. The college is required to review its investment policy and strategies not less than a year. This body of work has been performed by Meter on behalf of the college. We have Mr. McHale Wayne today to describe the results of the body of the work and recommendations with a proposed action item for the board's consideration at the end of the presentation.
All right, investment policy renewals. So we just simply, again, we're pretty much across the board recommending very few changes. Anything statutorily that would have changed, we would have had it currently reflected in the newest policy. But there were no material changes from the previous fiscal year.
I don't think there's a presentation, is there?
Right. No. You guys will just need to vote on the resolution to accept the investment policy.
So staff is recommending that we approve the adoption of the resolution as presented, noted that there are no changes to the policy from previous versions. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented? So moved. Thank you, Dr. Villarreal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions on the investment policy and strategy? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, one more thing, the broker-dealer list.
One more time. In accordance with Public Funds Investment 2256 and Board Policy B4625, the college is required to review, revise, and adopt a list of qualified brokers that are authorized to engage in investment activity for the college on an annual basis. This body of work has been performed by Meter and on behalf of the college. Mr. McHale Wayne will describe the results of the body of the work and recommendations with a proposed action item for the board's consideration at the end of the presentation.
Once again, on the approved broker-dealer list, there was just a modicum of change. There were a couple of firms that were merged, so thus, one name or two names would drop off the list. We expanded that list just to give us a little more access to, you know, different firms have different strengths and capabilities. So we did add a few more brokers this year than we have had in previous years. Again, that's just for more flexibility and more access to the various products, you know, when there is something that we want to take advantage of. It just gives us a little more flexibility and leaves us a little less constrained. So again, just weeding out some of the stuff that's not necessary to be there and adding a few more names and a little more variety going forward. And that's substantially what we've done with this new broker-dealer list here.
Thank you. Any questions about the process or the list itself? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing our broker-dealer list for the next fiscal year? Mr. Bennett makes the motion. Mr. Garza seconds it. Any questions, comments on the motion? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Our last item, action item for the day, is related to our college's quarterly financial statement. Mr. Johnson, you're getting quite the workout today.
I am. If you look at the revenue and expense statement, the college's financial continues to weigh on the uncertainty of the effects of the pandemic and student enrollment, and the effects of the upward trajectory of inflation, supply chain, and stress and tight labor markets. Despite these vulnerabilities, the college's financial position for the nine months ended May 22 is relatively stable. Our state appropriations and property tax revenues is on point relative to our planned budget. This is offset by the downward revenue pressures in tuition and miscellaneous income, with an estimated shortfall of between $3 and $4 million by year-end. Going on to the expense area, transitioning to our operating expenses, salary and benefits currently valued at $57.8 million is trending in accordance with the planned budget with a spend rate of 69%. The spending rate is consistent with the prior year. Non-salary expenses valued at $15.8 million is currently trending at an elevated level with a spending rate of 62%. This is 7% above the 55-spent rate for last year during the same period. The upside is that on May 25, the business office had a budget update meeting with the budget stakeholders and the college leadership with a request to temper spending in the fourth quarter of the year. Compliance with this request is projected to yield, is projected to yield between $3.5 and a $4.5 million surplus by year-end. If there are no questions, I'll move to the balance sheet.
I do have a question.
It doesn't need to be answered today, but one of the big items there is security in
the non-salaried expense items that is, I think, trending higher than last year. So is that related to Oso Creek Campus? Do we have a sense of that? Or maybe Tammy can get that answer later. I was just looking at what's out of the ordinary, and that seems to be out of the ordinary.
We've had some, during this year, it's trending higher because we've had some extra needs for additional security at different points in time throughout the college, but also putting those in place for Oso.
Okay.
Excuse me. And we also have a new contract that went into place at the first year, and it had increased rates.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
I've got one. I know, and again, congratulations, and thank you for your efforts on trying to reduce the shortfall so that we don't consume any fund balances that we thought we might eat up in the fourth quarter. But if we asked all the departments to cut expenses, the concern that I have, if we cut expenses in marketing, is that going to automatically fulfill, I guess, our projections that we're going to have a shortfall or a reduction in enrollment? That's the concern I have. I just question.
Marketing is one of the areas that we benefited from the HERF funding, that was the federal funding, and we were able to do a lot of the special marketing that you're going to see for fall semester enrollment coming out of the HERF dollars. And so those dollars were already allocated.
So we're not going to reduce the?
We're not reducing marketing.
Her efforts. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. If there are no questions, I'll go on to the balance sheet. As of the end of May, the college had a sound financial position to weather most business interruptions, including the current pandemic, with a cash and investment position of $77.3 million. In addition, the college has sufficient liquidity to pay its current obligations valued at approximately $74 million. If there are no questions, that ends my report.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? No stingers form for the last presentation?
Thank you very much.
We do need a motion to accept the college's quarterly financial statement for the period ending May 31. Is there a motion to accept? So moved. Thank you. Mr. Garza, second by Dr. Villarreal. Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right, having already done our closed session, we are going to go into calendaring. So Ms. Pettis provided us a calendar through the end of the calendar year, so we've got several things for you to be on the lookout this coming year, this coming month with the nurse penning ceremony, our summer graduation, and convocation. If you plan to attend any of those, please let Ms. Pettis know so that she can be prepared and provide anything that we need for those activities. Our regular board meeting will occur on September 13, and again, on October 11. There is the Annual Association of Community College Trustees Congress later in October. In November, we have our board date on November 8, which is also Election Day, and we have a possible date to canvas votes on the 18th, and Ms. Pettis will make sure that we have at least two, or as many regents as want to attend, on the 18th. And then, on December 13, we would do the oath of office for returning any newly-elected regents that might be on board with us. Prior to that, on the 7th, is the Higher Education Coordinating Board Leadership Conference, which will be in Austin at the University of Texas Conference Hotel. I think registration is not yet out for that. We'll keep an eye out for that, and if you're interested, Ms. Pettis will send that to you as soon as that becomes available. And then our fall graduation date is already set for December 16. Any questions about our calendar? Great. Thank you all for your participation today. We are adjourned at 2:44 PM.